At T-Mobile, our critical mission is providing unparalleled 5G coverage for when connectivity is mission critical. Introducing T-Priority, America's best 5G network experience for first responders, even in times of congestion. More capacity, faster speeds, better coverage. T-Priority from T-Mobile. Built for tomorrow's emergencies, ready today. Discover more at t-priority.com. For qualifying organizations on eligible rate plans, coverage is not available in some areas and may be impacted by emergencies.
Todd A. on CityCast Madison. Welcome to the Friday News Roundup. Early in-person absentee voting has begun, and we've got updates on our local elections. Plus, Regent Street is considering going buck wild on Badgerdom. It's Friday, March 21st. I'm Bianca Martin, and here's what Madison's talking about. All right, all right, all right. Joining me today is the leader of this here podcast, Haley Spurling. Hello.
Hi, Bianca. Happy Friday.
Happy Friday. And Rob Thomas, our newsletter czar. How is it going, Rob?
Just czaring it up over here.
Czaring it up. Yeah, you are.
Yes. Power. Okay, I'm kicking us off this week in the tune of democracy and zardom. One piece of news is early in-person absentee voting launched this week on Tuesday. So votes are already rolling in. As a reminder, the early in-person options ends the Sunday before the election. So you can go early vote in person now through the 30th. I'm gonna do it. That's what I'm gonna do. All right. And there are a ton of locations, including each of Madison's public library branches. Those hours, depending on the branch, do vary, so I recommend looking them up. We'll toss the city's page with details on locations and hours in our show notes. There are other locations in addition, like places at the university, the unions, different churches, Urban League, Centro Espano. So lots of places to vote early. And with that enthusiasm, is some enthusiasm around our big-ticket item on the ballot? People across the country are talking about our state Supreme Court election. Talking about enthusiasm, there's also some fear. We'll get into it around that. The race is between Dane County Judge Susan Crawford and Waukesha Judge Brad Schimmel, and it's heating up and, as predicted, bloated with outside money. The big name getting a ton of attention here is Elon Musk. Musk, the world's richest man, has already donated more than $12 million collectively to the conservative candidate Brad Schimmel. And that number continues to grow day by day. So billionaires are not just helping out the conservative candidate, but also the liberal candidate. So names that are donating to Susan Crawford's campaign include billionaires LinkedIn, co-founder Reid Hoffman, George Soros, and Illinois Governor J.B. Pritzker. So tons of money rolling in. A recent wisp politics.com tally found that almost $59 million has been spent on the race with several weeks left to go. So we've already surpassed the last court race's historic spending levels in 2023 by a few million. So we hit the moniker. We've made history, and it looks like this election is up for grabs. And maybe at this point, it's gonna go to the highest bidder.
It's just an insane amount of money, truly, when you think about it. And the fact that we're breaking so many records with this one Supreme Court race, and there's more Supreme Court races to come. And I just, ugh, I hate that it's like four people in the country slash like in the world that just get to throw their money around and make these things happen. And it's, it's an election. It is a democratic process. It should be of the people, by the people. And yet we have billionaires coming in on both sides, like you mentioned, on both sides, doing these things. And it's just, it's frustrating. I wish that we could just keep big money out of politics. And the way that we campaign in the US is weird. The way that judges campaign is weird. I mean, it's just, it's a lot. It's a lot.
Yeah, this is a nonpartisan election in name only at this point, when you have that many national people and national parties. And, and obviously, those people are being involved not because they're thinking of, you know, electoral outcomes and how that will affect Wisconsin in 2026 and 2028. And so it's not that they're really have our best interests at heart necessarily, or not thinking of them first.
It's also something to consider about, like, will this money be effective for either candidate? Particularly, you know, Elon Musk coming in and giving so much money. He's got a lot to give, right?
Oh, yeah. Richest man.
Yeah, richest man. Like, I mean, we've got billionaires, and then we got buh 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 billionaire. He's a singular sort of arena that he's in. You know, to note, this is an off-cycle spring election. So, you know, it's not midterms. There's no presidential race on this ticket. And so they tend to be more sleepy and have, you know, lower voter turnout. So we know Trump voters show up for Trump. But will they show up for the local election the way that they did? It's hard to say. Because the people who do tend to come through for these kinds of elections are the really cued-in, engaged voters, which in recent years tends to be Democratic. The recent special elections have been in the state of Wisconsin favoring Democrats. So it'll be interesting to see, like, if that money was well-spent for either side. And there's a lot of interest in the outcomes of our state as normal. Just want to shout out that we actually interviewed Judge Susan Crawford on the show, and it's our Monday episode. So if you want to hear from one of these candidates, please do listen to that podcast. It's a really strong interview and insightful. And we talk about things like the amount of spending in this race and how judges can be running for this sort of nonpartisan race when there's so much partisanship around it. And just to hear her record and her values. We did reach out to Brad Schimmel's team, I don't know, around four times. We still want to talk to you, Judge Schimmel. So if you or your teams listening, get back to us. And in the meantime, everyone tune in for our Monday episode. And, you know, we want to turn to even more local politics. But before we get into our local council races, which I'm really just more thrilled to talk about, I do not want to talk about Elon Musk, let's take a quick break.
This episode is sponsored by Babbel. Are you holding back on foreign travel plans this year because you're afraid of the language gap? I'm not, because I have Babbel. I'm David Plots, the CEO of CityCast, and I'm learning Spanish on Babbel, getting ready for a trip to Mexico City. Babbel is the language learning app that gets you talking. Babbel's quick 10-minute lessons, handcrafted by over 200 language experts, get you to begin speaking your new language in three weeks or whatever pace you choose. Babbel's tips and tools are inspired by the real-life stuff you actually need when communicating. With a focus on conversation, you'll be ready to talk wherever you go. Babbel has given me great lessons on getting directions, ordering in a restaurant, and making plans. And of all the things I'm doing in Mexico City, I'm probably most excited about the soccer game we're going to. So I was excited to learn how to cheer from Babbel. That'll be me you'll hear yelling, "Fuerte Tigres, fuerza Tigres." With over 16 million subscriptions sold, Babbel's 14 award-winning language courses are backed by a 20-day money-back guarantee. Let's get more of you talking in a new language. Babbel is gifting our listeners 60% off subscriptions at babbel.com/citycast. Get up to 60% off at babbel.com/citycast. Spelled B-A-B-B-E-L dot com slash citycast. Babbel.com/citycast. Rules and restrictions may apply.
March is here, and it's time to make a difference. Jersey Mike's Wisconsin stores are celebrating their annual month of giving, benefiting Special Olympics Wisconsin. And don't miss the highlight, Wednesday, March 26th. It's the Day of Giving. On this special day, Jersey Mike's is donating 100% of sales. Yes, you heard that right. 100% of sales, not just profit, to Special Olympics Wisconsin. That's subs, chips, drinks, and even catering. Order in-store or through the Jersey Mike's app. And know that 100% of your purchase stays right here in Wisconsin, supporting local athletes. So mark your calendars for this Wednesday, March 26th, and make your meal count. Help us give back to those who inspire us all. We're back. It's local. It's live. It's not live. We're a podcast.
We are here. We are talking about local races. And as Bianca mentioned, early voting has begun, and Election Day is less than two weeks away on April 1st. And in addition to this massive Supreme Court election, which we all know about, we just talked about it, Madisonians will also be voting on local elections for city councils. So as a reminder, every single city council seat is up for election, and 14 out of the 20 races are contested. So you guys might remember us talking about this earlier, but we put out a questionnaire to all of the candidates in the running. And we didn't hear back from all of them, but we heard back from a lot of them. And those replies are now live and posted on our website. Yay. Cue lots of applause.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So shout out to all the candidates who took the time to answer, because we asked them a lot of questions. Some of them were more fun. Some of them were very policy-oriented. But the first question that we asked candidates was, what is the single most pressing issue facing Madison? And almost all of them said the same thing. Bianca, can you guess what that was?
They want more candy stores and discotheques?
Yeah. Exactly in those words, too.
Discotheques.
Discotheque. Madison does need a little discotheque, but they want housing. Housing, 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 housing. Lack of affordable housing, lack of available housing, and overall, the cost of living skyrocketing. That is what these candidates said is the number-one issue facing Madison. And I'll read one of the responses from a candidate, which I think sums things up pretty well. This is from Sabrina Madison, who is the incumbent candidate running in the East Side, District 17. She said, quote, "The most pressing issue facing Madison is the lack of attainable, affordable housing. Too many residents, especially low-income families, seniors, and communities of color, are struggling to find stable, reasonably-priced homes. Rising costs, limited availability, and slow development timelines make it difficult for people to live and work in the city," unquote. Again, that was Sabrina Madison, who is running in District 17. She is being challenged by Sean Burke. And so if you really want to dig into Madison's housing crisis and what the city is doing to alleviate it, we actually had a conversation with the mayor earlier this month about just that, and we will link to that in our show notes. So housing, top of mind for everyone. It is truly the topic that we cannot hear enough about. And what are we gonna do? Hopefully, we're gonna keep building. And it's on city council to make sure that that building process moves forward smoothly and efficiently. And some of them have different ideas about how to do it. So that's why you got to read up on these candidates and check out our questionnaire online to see where they stand on these things. In addition to asking the candidates what the biggest challenge the city is facing right now, we also asked them to get specific about their districts. And this is where things got really interesting to me. So several candidates still mentioned housing issues, especially the downtown candidates. You know, they were like, affordable housing, like, it's the city's biggest issue. It's my district's biggest issue. Makes sense. But others highlighted increasing property taxes as a burden. Some talked about erratic drivers. Another mentioned their district just feeling kind of generally disconnected from the rest of the city. But one answer that really stood out to me came from District 3 candidate Derek Field, who is running unopposed. He said in part, quote, "I think that gun violence prevention is critical public safety strategy and has been a significant need in my district. During my first term as alder, four young people lost their lives to gun violence in my district. I see gun violence prevention holistically, meaning addressing the community factors that lead to conflict and violence. That includes social-emotional learning for children in schools, building trust and relationships between the public and law enforcement, preventing the kind of overpolicing of marginalized groups that erodes this community's trust, activating public spaces where violence has been an issue, and meeting families' basic needs like affordable housing, food, reliable transportation options, and economic opportunity," unquote. So I was glad that he brought this up, because overall, you know, Madison, we don't see that much gun-related activity, but that doesn't mean that it's not a problem. Obviously, children dying is a massive problem. And even just last week, a man was arrested over on the East Side for flashing a gun in a road rage incident. So thankfully, no one was hurt there. But it is an issue that I don't think we're talking about enough, and especially as Madison is on the hunt for a new police chief, which is also one of the questions that we ask the candidate. We do have to be talking about gun violence and prevention, and how these issues all kind of like work together, right? I really encourage people to go through and like see what the takes are, because there are a lot of different issues that face all of Madison. And it really depends on where you live and how you see these issues in their, in their terms of priorities and whatnot. So in addition to asking the candidates about the issues, we also, like I said, we had questions about the referendum, policing, and housing. We had some fun questions for the candidates as well. One of the more fun questions we asked was, what's one thing you wish you could change about Madison? Some people took the question very seriously once again in saying, like, I wish we had more affordable housing. And like, okay, I give you props for that, because I do, too. But these answers were really ranging. Tag Evers of District 13 and Davey Mayer of District 6 both said that they could do with less cold weather. Davey is like, I wish I could move Madison 100 miles south and make things a little bit warmer for us. But meanwhile, District 5 candidate Regina Vidiver said that she wants more snow, since she loves cross-country skiing. So we love to see a difference of opinion on council, right?
That's the kind of tension we're talking about.
Exactly. Yeah, these are the big issues.
Snow or go.
Exactly, exactly. So like I said, love to see a difference of opinion. Hopefully, they can all keep it cordial. We also asked candidates about their favorite meals in Madison. But to get those answers, you'll have to check it out online for yourself. So like I said, we've got a lot of good information out there. And between our coverage and coverage from other local news outlet like ISMS and CapTimes, all of the information you could ever want to know about the city council candidates are out there. And I will also link to ISMS and CapTimes in our show notes as well, just so you can have that at your fingertips. So lots of good stuff going on locally. I did just want to give a quick shout out, because of course, in addition to city council, we also have school board races. We just ran an episode where we talked to the candidates running in the only contested school board race, so check out that show. And there are also two Dane County Board Supervisor elections happening over on the West Side, which haven't gotten as much coverage, but I think that's mostly because the elections are both uncontested, and there's not a whole lot to say there. And then there's also the Dane County Supervisor role that is up for election. And you might be thinking, didn't we just vote on this? Yes, we did. But it was, it was a race for a special election. And now Melissa Agard, who won that last role, is running again. She does face a challenger in this race as well. So lots to watch there. All's is to say, there's a lot of information out there. We will link to it in our show notes. Get informed, make an informed decision. Like I said, 14 contested city council races. Your vote counts in some of these races. It literally comes down to single-digit votes, you know? Get out there and go do your civic duty.
I just want to give a huge kudos to Haley for all the work that you put in on getting these city council survey results. And of course, we're thanking everyone who sent them in, but they're so good. And you have a landing page, and people can go and look at them, and we can't recommend it enough. I seriously enjoyed reading through all of them. It made me feel more connected to Madison. And I was like, oh, yeah, that's such a good point. And yeah, that's the right sandwich. And it's a lot of good. It's really good.
It was just, it was really fun for me to dig into the responses, you know, and just see what people had to say and see where there was, you know, kind of that resounding, yes, we're all on the same page about this. But then, of course, there are places where people differ and whatnot. So it's really interesting to see. So like I said, it's all published on our website.
Yeah. People totally dedicated to our city, running for city council. Thank you for being a part of democracy and looking out for all of us. Lots of fanfare around this survey, and rightfully so. And we're about to talk about some more fanfare, possibly coming to Regent Street. Really sucked about that. Before we get into that news, let's take a quick break.
I can say to my new Samsung Galaxy S25 Ultra, hey, find a keto-friendly restaurant nearby and text it to Beth and Steve. And it does, without me lifting a finger, so I can get in more squats anywhere I can. One, two, three.
Um, will that be cash or credit?
Credit, four.
Galaxy S25 Ultra, the AI companion that does the heavy lifting, so you can do you. Get yours at samsung.com. Compatible with select apps. Requires Google Gemini account. Results may vary based on input. Check responses for accuracy.
Are you still quoting 30-year-old movies? Have you said Cool Beans in the past 90 days? Do you think Discover isn't widely accepted? If this sounds like you, you're stuck in the past. Discover is accepted at 99% of places that take credit cards nationwide. And every time you make a purchase with your card, you automatically earn cash back. Welcome to the now. It pays to discover. Learn more at discover.com/creditcard. Based on the February 2024 Nielsen report.
All right, let's go over to Regent Street, where people are jumping around. Or maybe they're not, I don't know. We're jumping around for Regent Street. There's some news.
That's right. Yeah, so we're talking about Regent Street, which of course is the near West Side street that kind of skirts UW-Madison. It's like, it's really where the university and the city kind of smash into each other. And if you're a Badger football fan, of course, you've been down there tailgating on game day. Although interestingly, our buddy Sam Brown at Leopold's in Fabiola's said he's noticed there was less tailgate traffic last season, and he's wondering if maybe that's because of alcohol sales at Camp Randall. It's just not as necessary to pregame down there as it was before. But either way, people like Sam who live and work there, they love the street, but they don't want it to kind of rise and fall based on tailgating. So I mean, I have a lot of affection for Regent Street. It's this hodgepodge of apartments and bars and convenience stores and restaurants. It's like, you see echoes of the old Green Bush neighborhood that was there. You see some new developments. You know, it mixes sort of the student vibe, the resident vibe. It's a little bit of everything all jumbled together. But this community group called the Regent Street Group, which is city council members, developers, business owners, residents, are looking at ways to maybe heighten the appeal of Regent Street a year round. And they've got some big ideas. Channel 3000 had a story that showed some of these ideas, some designs that would really transform the street over the next 10 to 20 years. And the big one that people seem really excited about is to create a Badger-themed entertainment district. If I can describe it, it's the triangle where Monroe, Regent Street, and North Randall all kind of make that triangle. The Southwest commuter bike path kind of slices through the middle of it. There's that apartments where Green Bush Bakery is. And the idea is to make it like a big, like, multi-use plaza with like restaurants and, and housing and shopping. I think the idea they're thinking of is something like the Title Town District near Lambeau and Green Bay, if you've been there, or the Deer District near Pfizer Forum in Milwaukee. The idea is like, it's not just a place you go to on game day, but a place that would attract students, would attract visitors from into town, whether the teams are playing or not. The biggest hurdle to overcome for Regent Street is to make it accessible for everyone. I said I liked the street. I don't love driving on it, quite honestly. There's a lot of stop-and-go, a lot of traffic. What I like even-
It's the worst. It's so bad.
It's so bad. What I like even worse is walking across Regent Street, because of all that traffic, there, there are crosswalks that are sometimes respected. And it's really, you know, it's hard to find parking if you're driving. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bike on that street on a bet. So that, that is a big concern, I think, is to make that street amenable for pedestrians, especially, I think. So some of those designs are finding ways to, you know, to, to make pedestrian traffic run a little smoother, make everything a little safer for everybody. The city's planning a reconstruction of that street. Probably, I think they're taking public comment later this year and thinking about it next year. And they're also looking at that Southwest commuter path and trying to make it more, more friendly to bikers. So, you know, there'd be bike parking, so you could bike down there, hang out at this new Deer District, and then leave it. Just make it more of like a destination for, no matter how you're getting there. So I think it's really interesting. Like, like I said, I have a lot of affection for the way Regent Street is now, just because it's such a, such an amalgam of all, you know, past and present. But I also, these ideas are kind of exciting for the future. So I don't know what you guys think of the idea. And the other thing I was thinking is, you know, what would we call this, this entertainment district? So my idea is Bucky Town.
I love it.
Yeah. And I usually live in Bucktown in Chicago, so maybe I'm thinking about that in a way. But I don't know. What do you guys think?
Oh, we got a Badgers Boulevard from Jade coming in for this year.
Oh, that's good. That's good. Yeah.
Badgers Boulevard.
Bucky, Bucky District. I don't know. That's, that's boring. That's boring. The Deer District, that works.
It works. Title Town, like, I mean, alliterative, I think, is maybe where to go. Yeah.
My first thought was Bucky Brawl, which is like, just what I feel like that area is already.
That is what that area is already. I mean, Rob, you're talking about driving down that street. I very much compare Regent Street to almost like the West Side Willie Street, where each block is its own circle of the seven hells, driving, walking, commuting down it. It's just, it's all unique in its own way. And they're all bad.
Dante's Inferno.
It is. It is. Honestly, I think Regent is worse than Willie. Like Willie, I think people drive slower, and they're used to, they're kind of used to the pedestrians being around. And you'd think that people are used to pedestrians being around on Regent Street, but the way people drive over there, I think also because there's sometimes street parking, and there sometimes isn't, and there's turn lanes, and people are trying to, you know, it, the traffic goes in both directions, too. It's just, oh, it's so stressful. So, so stressful.
And there, I mean, there are a lot of students there. So there are a lot of students walking back and forth, slowing things down. And the left turn lanes are always, people are always backed up. So, yeah, it is a, it is a challenging street to, to love sometimes, I think.
I wonder if they're just like, let's lean in. Because in a way, I'm like, oh, it already is that to a degree, you know? So why not brand it? So it might even make it safer, because people are like, you know, like, or at least more awareness. Because it's very shared. I mean, it's a, it's a very busy business district.
But that's the appeal of it, I think, is that, but, but to have a place where everybody can kind of come and, and in a safer way, I think, no matter how you come. So this Bucky Brawl, or, I don't know, Bucky Berg, I don't know, something, something-
Bucky Bur- Bucky Borough.
Buckwild.
Bucky Borough is pretty good.
Bucky Borough.
That's pretty good.
That could be something. I mean, it doesn't have to be Bucky. I don't know. Badger Borough, maybe, something like that. I mean, they already have the Set, which is, you know, in Union South, but that's what they call where Badgers live. So they could call it like the Set, though that would get confusing to people, maybe, if they're already familiar with the Union South area. But I agree.
Paint the road red and white.
Yes. Cute, cute. I, I do agree, though. I think that like this area, it already kind of is what the proposal is saying, right? But I think in order to truly optimize the space and to make it a safer environment, you know, for pedestrians, for tailgaters, for everyone, like, to have that sort of, quote-unquote, official designation, does make a big difference, you know? Like, I'm thinking about the State Street pedestrian mall situation, you know? Like, that was, State Street has always just been a walking street. But when they formally shut down, you know, the first couple of blocks, they're like, hey, no, like, this is pedestrian mall. Like, things were better, and businesses, you know, they did see, they did see pickup. We did see traffic out there. People were out there. So I think that this could be ultimately a good thing and, you know, just sort of help guide those lost souls who are like, am I supposed to be out here? Because Regent Street, it can be sort of uninviting if you don't know what you need to know in order to be successful on game day there. And you should know what you need to be successful on game day there, because we did have a nice conversation with Mr. Nick Nice, the king of Regent Street Parties, last year. But that's beside the point. So, yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Oh, I'm just having a memory of driving error that I was involved in on Regent Street. And like, I was leaving a place, and someone was like in a fight, like a physical fight, like, right in front of my car, and someone else was intervening. And I was like, okay, I'm gonna back out, let you guys handle this. It looks like it's under control. And there was just like, the energy was, is just, it's a lot. It's a lot. So I actually do hope that they just like address something as this area grows, you know, address the sort of chaos that's there and make it more controlled. I'm excited about that. Lame, older person, no longer Badger.
No fun. Boo. Stop fighting in front of my car. No fun. Boo. Stop fighting in front of my car. I think that's a reasonable request.
I'm trying to go to bed. It's 8:00 PM. Um, man, I mean, we have takes about Regent Street, obviously. And we know y'all have takes, too. You're probably feeling this, and you have your own experiences. We had a lot of fun with a recent conversation that we published this week about strip mall restaurants. Like, I know that region has a few strip malls. And a ton of y'all wrote in. We asked you, what's your favorite strip mall restaurant? And a ton of you wrote into our newsletter, Madison Minutes, with your takes. We love that. We love hearing from you and hearing your voices. And just while, you know, we're talking about fun things, it's officially spring. Can you tell us about your spring plans for Madison? Like, are you getting up to anything fun? Is it time to start a garden? Like, what are you thinking about? Leave us a voicemail at 608-318-3367. And we'd love to hear from you. We're having fun, right?
Yeah. So much, we're so much fun. Call us.
Yeah. Are you, are you going to a Renaissance fair? Like, what should we, what should we know that's like going down in Madison this spring?
And our, the strip mall feature underscored, like, our readers are everywhere in the city, and they will tell, you know, it's such a great way to find out about areas where we don't necessarily go. Like, we found great restaurant ideas in every strip mall in the city, it felt like. So, so we're counting on you, is what we're saying.
We're counting on you. And also, if you're not subscribed to the Madison Minutes newsletter, definitely do that. Head to our website. All right, y'all, it's Friday. We've done it. Elections are coming, and Regent Street's about to get buck wild. Thank you so much for rounding up the news with me this week, Haley Spurling.
It's been a joy and a pleasure and a Bucky adventure.
Yes. And Rob Thomas.
Great to see you, Bianca.
That's all for today, here on CityCast Madison. I'm Bianca Martin, your host. We're produced by Jade Isere Ramos and Lizzie Goldsmith. Haley Spurling is our executive producer. Our theme music is by Carl Christensen. Rob Thomas is our newsletter editor. Don't forget, you can always get more news delivered right to your inbox by subscribing to Madison Minutes. And hey, if you enjoyed today's show, why don't you this podcast with a Badger, someone who gets buck wild? See you back here Monday morning with more news from around the city. Until then, have a good weekend. I think there were planes for a lot of that, but-
God, we need to like, talk to the DOD and say like, hey, you guys can fly your planes, but not when we're recording our podcast.
Not between 10:30 and 11:15 on Thursdays and 1:30.
That's protected airspace.